Welcome to the Senate. To all of our guests attending, thank you. Welcome to the Senate. We'd ask that you'd help us keep order during the process today as we move through this special session of the legislature. Senate will please come to order in accordance with Article Three, Section Seven of the Wyoming Constitution and Rule Eighteen of the Joint Rules of the House and the Senate. The Senate of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming Legislature Special Session is convened at the hour of ten a.m. this twenty-sixth day of October, 2021, at the written request of majority of the elected members of the Wyoming Senate and House of Representatives. Chief Clerk will read the proclamation convening this special session of the sixty-sixth legislature.
Whereas Article Three, Section Seven of the Constitution of the State of Wyoming authorizes the Wyoming Legislature, upon written request to the presiding officers of each house by the majority of the elected members of each house, to convene a special session not to exceed twenty days, and whereas a critical situation exists relating to COVID-19 vaccine mandates, which requires legislative action and cannot be deferred until the convening of the 2022 budget session of the Wyoming Legislature, and whereas the requirements of Article Three, Section Seven of the Constitution of the State of Wyoming relating to the legislature convening a special session have been fulfilled. Now therefore, we, Dan Dogstetter and Eric Barlow, President of the Senate and Speaker of the House of Representatives, respectively, of the Wyoming Legislature, do hereby proclaim the necessity for a special session of the Wyoming Legislature to address the matters identified herein and summon the members thereof to convene in special session to be conducted in accordance with the provisions of Article Three, Section Seven of the Constitution of Wyoming, applicable to legislative sessions, at the State Capitol in the city of Cheyenne, County of Laramie, on this twenty-sixth day of October, 2021, at the hour of ten o'clock in the morning of said day. In accordance therewith, we set our hands here too and caused the seal of the legislature of the State of Wyoming to be affixed this nineteenth day of October, 2021. Signed, Senator Dan Dogstetter, President of the Senate. Signed, Representative Eric Barlow, Speaker of the House of Representatives.
Thank you. Pursuant to Senate Rule fourteen point five A, a record of the response to the poll of Senate members on the issue of convening this special session shall be entered into the Journal of the Senate in addition to this proclamation. At this point, I invite Senator Steinmetz to give the invocation and lead us in the pledge. Pledge, Senator Steinmetz.
Welcome to our family, friends and neighbors who live in town. To be with us today. Thank you for being here today and being involved in your government. We are here to represent you. You are our people. Thank you, fellow senators, for leaving your families, work, and businesses, and other commitments to represent your constituents today. Please join me in the prayer for the nation that has been passed out at your desk, and we pass some out at the door. Are you ready? Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly ask that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of your favor and glad to do your will. Bless our land with honorable ministry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitude brought here out of many kindreds and tongues. Endow with your spirit of wisdom those whom in your name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to your law, we may show forth your praise among the nations of the earth. In time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in you to fail, all of which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. And that was Thomas Jefferson, March fourth, eighteen oh one. We are living at a transformational moment in history, a moment in time in which we will decide what our state and our nation will become. We are living in a time when governments have become lawless and communities have become divided, all because of their response to COVID-19. We can make a decision for this to end. Abraham Lincoln warned us that America will never be destroyed from the outside. If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we have destroyed ourselves. We are living in a time when it has never been more important that sovereign states reclaim their proper role in government, restore our communities, and check the power of the federal government. Thomas Jefferson said, "I consider the foundation of the Constitution as laid on this ground, that all powers not delegated to the United States by the Constitution, nor prohibited to it by the states, are reserved to the states and the people. To take a single step beyond its boundaries, thus specially drawn around the powers of Congress, is to take possession of boundless fields of power, no longer susceptible to any definition." Today, we have the opportunity to meet force with equal force and defend our people and secure their freedom. We have the opportunity to have the courage to fight for the God-given rights of our people. We can stand as a sovereign state on behalf of our people. We can make the decision that no virus will defy or defeat us or take our precious freedom. There is only one decision you need to make. You are either working at freedom, or you are accepting your bondage by Robert Adams. Today, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance, today let us remember that this is our pledge to each other, to our people. We are republic, and we are one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator Steinmetz. The Chief Clerk will call the roll of the Wyoming Senate.
Roll call for Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
White man?
Here.
Boner?
Here.
Bichard?
Here.
Case?
Present.
Cooper?
Here.
Driscoll?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
French?
Here.
Furphy?
Here.
Guru?
Here.
Hicks?
Present.
Hutchings?
Here.
James?
Here.
Kinskey?
Here.
Cole?
Present.
Cost?
Present.
Landon?
Here.
McCune?
Here.
Nethercot?
Here.
Tappas?
Excused.
Perkins?
Here.
Rothfuss?
Here.
Salazar?
Here.
Schuler?
Scott?
Here.
Steinmetz?
Wasserman?
President Dogstetter?
Here.
Twenty-nine present, one excused.
Thank you. The Chief Clerk will read a message from the Honorable Mark Gordon, Governor Wyoming, to the Special Session of the Sixty-Sixth Legislature. It shall also be entered into the Journal of the Senate.
October twenty-sixth, 2021, to the Honorable Dan Dogstetter and the Honorable Eric Barlow. Dear President Dogstetter, Speaker Barlow, and members of the Sixty-Sixth Legislature, pursuant to Article Four, Section Four, the governor is obliged to communicate to the legislature at the beginning of each session the condition of the state. This special session comes in the middle of preparing the next biennium budget. That work is not yet complete. Since his special session does not concern itself with the regular business of the state, a routine state of the state seems unwarranted. For the record, Wyoming has done well over this past year. We are coming back. Companies are looking favorably to Wyoming as a friendly place to do business. News from several sectors has been encouraging, but our progress is precarious, and we should be mindful about how best to nurture this recovery. This special session, though, is not about the regular business of the state. It has been hard to stomach the increasingly aggressive license the Biden administration has taken over the past few months to extend the federal government's overreach into our lives. This temerity is offensive to me, to you, to Wyoming citizens, and to the Constitution that enumerates our rights. It must be stopped. In Wyoming, we believe in small government closest to those it governs, one that is limited by the checks and balances enshrined in our Constitution and embodied in the very nature of our country as a republic. Regardless of whether overreach emanates from Washington or Cheyenne, we are opposed to its interference in our lives. Wyoming citizens have not been shy in expressing their objections to government mandates. We value personal responsibility much higher than we do government edict, and we agree that Wyoming cannot let these federal transgressions stand. From the start, my administration has been active in defending your citizens' rights. You all know that I banned vaccine passports by directive as soon as that notion surfaced, and you know that I have directed my staff and cabinet to spare no effort in forcefully opposing government mandates. I firmly believe that COVID-19 vaccination must be a personal choice. As a conservative and a Republican, I believe in the individual rights every citizen is afforded under both our national constitution and our state constitution. That includes the rights of any citizen to run their business as they see fit. Therefore, I am incensed that the Biden administration would have the audacity to mandate that private employers require their employees be vaccinated against COVID-19 and find it unconscionable to threaten to withhold Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements unless the mandates are enforced. Using taxpayer dollars in an attempt to coerce compliance is nothing more than blackmail. Our Constitution has written and fought for, fought for, to protect our liberties as Americans, not to become an instrument of oppression. The Biden administration's pronouncements on these matters demonstrate its complete disregard for the rule of law and the freedoms that both individuals and private companies enjoy under our Constitution. Our founders recognized what we here in Wyoming hold dear, that government must be held in check and be limited in its authority. These are heady times, and it is clear that we are all frustrated by the nonsense coming out of Washington, D.C., as well as the continuing disrespect this administration shows for states' and citizens' rights. I empathize with this body's impatience to do something about it. In addition, as you know, my administration has not been idle. So as the work of this special session commences, I want to offer you an update on some of what the executive branch has been up to as it prosecutes its responsibilities to protect Wyoming citizens from federal overreach. As soon as President Biden threatened vaccine mandates, I instructed the Attorney General to be prepared to take all legal actions to oppose this unconstitutional overreach of federal executive power. Accordingly, General Hill has been busy strengthening alliances, refining potential arguments, and considering appropriate legal strategies to stop whatever harm comes from Washington on these points. She has already partnered with a coalition of Republican attorneys general who are working together to craft effective legal action for when the time is right and a target presents itself. She and many of her colleagues have already penned a letter jointly to the President outlining their objections to mandates on private employers. That letter is attached. While General Hill has been working with her peers, I have also been in regular contact with other Republican governors discussing strategies and preparing other responses to confront this federal menace. We believe federal vaccine regulations are imminent, and just to be clear, as I had indicated before, I stand ready to call you all back into special session should that need arise. We are a conservative state with a Republican majority in the legislature and a Republican governor. We strive always to work for the best interests of the citizens of our state. I swore an oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States and that of Wyoming. I have done that to the best of my ability. I believe in liberty for individuals and that those liberties extend to how individuals choose to run their businesses. These principles cannot be decoupled for political expediency. To do so, as Hamilton and Madison argued in the Federalist Papers, numbers nine and number ten, would risk the populous demise that has doomed earlier republics. We have seen the same vibration between anarchy and tyranny that Hamilton describes as current democracies have failed elsewhere in the world. Our Constitution is truly original and remarkable in the way its checks and balances have saved us from the worst excesses of power and ambition. We have been blessed since our inception with leaders such as George Washington, who rejected calls to replace one form of tyranny with another. I appreciate the challenges you have ahead of you, to be both thoughtful and to act urgently with purpose and merit. I look forward to seeing the fruits of your labor, and will review them carefully and without prejudice, as is customary. I imagine many of you are also keenly aware of the other pressing work of the state to craft a budget in these distressing times and to finalize the constitutionally mandated redistricting. We have a lot to do in the few months before the budget session. Wyoming is a citizens' legislature made up of committed people who, in addition to personal lives, have other full-time jobs and businesses. It is because our legislators are not professional politicians that they bring the practical experience to bear on lawmaking, which has eluded so many other states. Indeed, our U.S. Congress sometimes seems to have forgotten what it means to legislate and falling instead into the temptation to grandstand. I thank you for taking the time away from families, jobs, and businesses to address all of the important issues which confront our state and her people in these troubling times. Sincerely, Mark Gordon, Governor.
Thank you. I direct the Chief Clerk to notify his excellency, the governor, that 2021 Special Session of the Senate, Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature, is organized and ready to receive and communications he may desire, any communications he may desire to submit. I direct the Chief Clerk to notify the House that the 2021 Special Session of the Senate, Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature, is organized and ready to receive any communications that they may desire to submit. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, we are at that order of business, amending and adoption rules. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, do you have a motion?
Mr. President, I do. I move Joint Resolution zero zero one, proposing the permanent joint rules for the Senate of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming State Legislature be amended by adding Joint Rule Twenty-Four, Special Session Rules, applicable to this special session.
The Chief Clerk will read in the proposed amendment.
Amending the joint rules of the House and Senate by creating new Joint Rule Twenty-Four to read as follows.
Chief Clerk will read in the proposed amendment. Thank you. You've heard the motion. That motion requires a two-thirds vote of the membership. The Chief Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. President, I would like to withdraw the amendment.
Motion withdrawn? Go ahead, Senator Rothfuss.
We are on the rules. So this is an amendment to the rules. Proposing to withdraw would fully withdraw all of the amendments, the twenty-four dash one at this point. Is that the intent of the Majority Floor Leader?
Mr. Floor Leader, would you re-estate your motion?
I withdraw my withdrawal.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader, for the record, would you reread that, please?
I wish to not withdraw the motion. Let the members know.
You've heard the motion then. The motion requires a two-thirds vote of the membership. The Chief Clerk will call the roll. Mr. Senator Scott.
Mr. President, I think this is a debatable motion, is it not?
We'll open it up for discussion now. Senator Scott?
Mr. President, I would like some explanation of this. I may have some remarks, I understand, but what I've got here and what I heard read, I couldn't correlate, and I am very uncertain what we are being asked to vote.
Senator Driscoll.
Mr. President, thank you. This is an amendment that makes it where, should we enact special rules, that we are allowed to concurrently assign bills to appropriations committees so we follow our normal rules. So, under normal rules, if we have an appropriation and bill, it's referred to appropriations committee, and this makes it where they can be done concurrently so that we can get our business done in an expedited manner, while we still follow our normal process where referral to appropriations.
Point of order? Minority Floor Leader?
Thank you. Mr. President, the point of order, the motion we're on is the special session rules. This is a motion to amend the rules of the Sixty-Sixth Wyoming Legislature that we're currently operating under. This is a comprehensive change in the rules that was distributed to add specific special session rules. Everyone should have a copy of those rules titled Twenty-four Special Session Rules, and then quite a few changes to those rules thereafter. So, a vote right now, the impending vote, would be on that rule. We have a series of amendments to that rule which are not yet on the floor. So, the debate and the motion on the floor at this point is on the amendment to the Sixty-Sixth Legislature's general rules with the Twenty-four Special Session Rules. That debate is in order, and then we would systematically, at some point in that debate, go through proposed amendments to that amendment to the rules. And I think it would be in order for an advocate for the special session rules to begin by providing some of the details of how these special session rules would change the rules of the Sixty-Sixth Legislature. I could certainly walk through and do that, but I intend to speak against those rules. So it seems like a proponent would be a more appropriate candidate for that speech, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minority Floor Leader. Senator Kinskey?
Mr. President, I can't resist an invitation like that, so do let me just give a highlight of the proposed Twenty-one dash four Special Session Rules. First, we would have a mere budget, mere bill process, similar to what we do during the budget session. And a bill to be considered must be on that mere bill list. That list would be introduced by the Majority Floor Leader, and then by majority vote, we would either add or remove bills from that list. Anything that failed to obtain a majority would go to the Rules Committee, and when we adopted the final list of bills, they would be assigned by the President to committees. If the House and Senate lists of mere bills do not agree, any bill not appearing on both lists would not be considered. So if it does not make it in one House, the committee in the corresponding House would not hear it because it would be a waste of time because it's not on the mere bill list. And then finally, this would allow for appropriations concurrent referrals. As you know, during regular session, when there's a bill that has an appropriation, it first goes to the Standing Committee. If it's reported out and it has an appropriation, it's re-referred to appropriations. Instead, we'd have an expedited procedure that the bill would simultaneously go for consideration to appropriations as well as the Standing Committee. This change of rules must be adopted by two-thirds vote. It's subject to debate of five minutes each, two times, just like during regular session because currently we're under the regular rules. And I guess the final thing that I would add is that if these rules do not obtain a two-thirds vote, it simply means that if we do not vote to adjourn, we proceed henceforth under the rules of the Sixty-Sixth Legislature. So, it's a decision on the two-thirds. Either we do this on an expedited procedure in three days, or if we vote not to adjourn, then we fall back to the regular rules, and it would be a four-to-seven day process. So I hope that's a high-level overview of the rules, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion? Senator Perkins?
So, I just, this is a point of order. I mean, we're, I think, was the motion on to adopt the special session rules of number twenty-four? Is that what the pending motion is?
That's correct, Senator.
Okay. So the copy that I have of the special session rules, does it, there was, there was SR one which was dealt with concurrent referral, which was in Rule Eighteen. There was joint, joint, I think that also meant a joint rule, anyway, it was, that one, that one is in there, at least that one I see in the, in the bill that's printed out. I'm just, I'm just looking, and there was a series of amendments that went to the special session rules, and are they all already in, in Rule Twenty-four? Are there, are there, are there four or five separate amendments that you have to change to Rule Twenty-four? Mr. President, my concern is, is that if we vote on this rule now, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that all the amendments that, that, that leadership wanted are in this, are in Twenty-four as it's been moved, or is there separate amendments that have to be dealt with in order to change Twenty-four to get it to where leadership intended to have it?
Let's, let's go to Senator Rothfuss, then to Vice President Hicks, in that order, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the point of order, the amendments that were distributed which begin with SR one are not in the joint rule as presented. Joint Rule Twenty-four dash one is the motion, if it's been moved, which I'm not entirely certain, we can talk about it. can talk about it later. But that would be the motion that's on the floor. Each of these amendments to that amendment would need to be worked through as we do amendments with bills pursuant to a committee of the whole or one of the readings prior to voting on the final motion for the rules. So, these are amendments to the amendment to the rules. These are amendments to the amendment to the rules that would have to individually be worked through prior to a final vote on the special session rules. I hope that clarifies, Mr. President. Thank you. And, Mr. President, on a separate point of order, I don't know that anyone has moved for the adoption of...
Thank you, Mr. Minority Floor Leader. That was just a discussion at the desk. We're going to have it moved formally.
That would be a good way to do it.
Before that, we're going to go back to Senator Driscoll. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, would you move this formally for the record? Joint Resolution 1.
Mr. President, I would move for adoption of special session rules 24-1.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader, what we have here is, we need you to move JR0001, opposing the permanent and joint rules of the Senate of the 66th Wyoming State Legislature.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of amendment JR0001 to the joint rules.
Okay. We're going to call that official. At this point, let's move it back out for any further discussion on the floor. Senator Kinske, did you want to follow up? All right. Any further discussion on the floor? Senator Scott?
Mr. President, parliamentary inquiry. I'm totally confused. I do not see anything identified as JR001. I saw, I see an SR001. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, copies. Senator Scott, I'm told you have copies of it there at your desk. Also, there are some up here.
Okay, it is.
Yes, correct.
Mr. President, for the parliamentary inquiry, and Chief Clerk, this one will be for you, but, Mr. President, I see a sentence that is underlined, and on our normal procedure, I think that's a sentence being added. I understand that. And then there are a number of ones on this copy that are highlighted in green. What does that highlighting mean? Is that an attempt to strike them out, or what is?
Senator, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
President, thank you. The green was, I think, was just highlighted out by staff to make it where everybody could see what goes. It's the rules that we're going to be operating under. I don't, I don't think they're, they're not strikes. They're not anything part of it. It was an explanation by staff, the 90 minutes, the different times, so that all of us understood the rules we're going to be operating under. It should not have been on your copy. It's on mine as well. Should not have been there.
Senator Scott, does that cover your question? Senator Scott?
Yes, it gives me some understanding of what this really is.
Thank you. Mr. Floor Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. The entirety of Rule 24-1 is new, so while there is an underline that looks like, based on our conventions and insertion, all of 24-1 is newly written and does not exist. There's no modification of an existing rule. It is a new rule for the special session. So, just contemplate it as such. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Senator Case?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the procedure, point of order, so I think what we're going to do to proceed is, the rules have been moved, and as my good colleague has said, that it's all new language, in essence, for our purposes. So, we, then, I assume we're going to entertain amendments to those rules and discuss them individually, and each of those would allow the members to speak, and each of those amendments, as I interpret it, would require a two-thirds vote on its own. And so, that's a question I have, but that's the way I interpret it. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, the other question is, then, at the very end, once the amendments have been disposed of, we will have an opportunity to return to the main motion, and the senators can use their five minutes on the main motion. Is that the chair's pleasure?
Thank you, Senator Case. I do have a clarification. It'll be a majority of the elected. Thank you for pointing that out. Do we have further discussion on this? Senator Case?
The amendments only, correct?
Correct.
And then the final motion would be two-thirds of those elected.
Correct.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Senator Landon, next door.
Mr. President, thank you. My point of order is on something at a more elementary level. I join my colleagues in being a little bit confused with what we're really up to this morning, but I'm spurring the horse hard to try to get there. My question is, if we're going to allow for the consideration of amendments during this process, and subsequent to that, come back to the discussion on the adoption of the rules, I just wanted to find out where those amendments are. Are we to get those in the back room? Are we to get them electronically? That would really help me to know where we can find what we're going to be debating. Thank you.
Let's ensure that anybody else that needs to speak to the rules can do so. At this point, Senator Anderson.
Mr. President, the written rules that are up on the table don't agree with the rules that we have on the, on the computer.
Senator Rafferty.
Thank you. On that point of order, the written rules, you have a copy of the amendments to the rules. The written rules may have been cleaned up to look better, but have not been changed relative to the 24-1 session rules that were posted on the website. So, the electronic language and any written copy should be the same because that was the final language that was provided. And I'm not sure what the good senator from Monona County is looking at, but there are written copies of the amendments available, and it's possible that that was what was being looked at. And if that's the case, it was my understanding that everyone had a distributed written copy of the rules. I see heads shaking, though, so perhaps those need to be picked up. And, Mr. President, I don't know where online those are available. That might be something for us to clear up so the public has an opportunity to take a look at them as well.
Let's, let's do this. Let's recess for just a moment to make sure everybody has the adequate paperwork and the rules they have in hand so we can proceed properly. So, we'll stand recess until the sound of the gavel.
We'll wait a moment for everyone to get back into their seats. Okay, thank you for your patience. This may make a regular session look easy after this. Let's proceed. Well, now, Joint Rule 0001 has been moved. And we will now hear the debate on the rule, followed by consideration of the amendments. Is there any further discussion on the rule? Senator Kase?
Point of order question, Mr. President. Would, uh, will there be an opportunity to discuss the final rules? Or, uh, if you're going to speak against the rules, would this be the appropriate time?
This would be, Mr., Senator Kase, this would be the appropriate time on Joint Rule 1.
And has someone spoken in favor?
No, but let's have someone do that. Senator Kinsky?
President, there was a question about finding this information. And the proposed joint resolution, uh, people can simply go on the, on our front page of wildedge.gov. It says 2021 Special Session, October 26 to 28. Then it has three subcategories, one of which is Proposed Special Session Rule. Click on that, it opens up another window that will show the Proposed 24, Rule 24. Then, for the amendments, you'd go to the front page again of the, uh, wildedge.gov. And, uh, under Legislation, it says Calendars, Committees, Legislation, and Legislators. Under Legislation, the last line is Session Information. You click on that, and it takes you a page that says 2021 Special Session, and it has a series of tabs. The first are Bills, Calendar, Audio and Video, and then Rules and Legislative Procedures. And that is where all the amendments are, in order which they will be considered.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone speaking for the rule? Senator Scott?
Mr. President, speaking on and for the rule. Mr. President, I've seen a lot of special sessions in, in my time. Uh, I haven't counted how many. It will go sometimes a number of years without having had one, and then we'll have one or two. We have, oh, I think, I can't, I'm trying to think of an exception. Adopted some special rules to govern those sessions. And the subject matter of the session has always been pretty clearly defined. We've, there's been a mistake made, it has to be corrected. There's a sudden problem that has, that comes up that we need to take some action on to get us, uh, over to a, a regular session where we can consider things more leisurely. You have to do something temporary. Um, and there's usually been a pretty good consensus on what ought to be done. I'm not sure all of those conditions apply here, but I, I do urge us to adopt the special rules. It'll enable us to be expeditious about dealing with the subject matter at hand. It will enable us to avoid experience issues that have not been thought out at all. And we have regular procedures, interim committees, the time available in either a budget or a general session to deal with other matters. And we take some time. A special session should be for a special purpose, and these rules provide it. And listen to the message we got from the governor. He spoke the importance of retaining a citizen legislature. We are crestfast already without them on that. Because as citizen legislature, you have to have time for the members to go home and earn a living and operate, you know, as, as a, as a normal citizen under the laws and do all the things with your family and whatnot you need to do. If we get away from that, we are headed for a professional legislature, or I think the worst of all was, a half-time legislature. You can't earn a living either way, and you get only people who don't need to earn one. That's not very representative, that's, that's a misfortune. And we're already with all the extra committees we've had. We're starting to crestfallen dangerously into this area. We start, a number of legislatures have gone from part-time citizen to full-time professional through a series, just interminable series of special sessions. And I think this could be the first step down there. The thing to do is to hold the amount of time down. That's what the rules are designed, that's why leadership has brought them. I urge us, support our leadership, to essentially, like, provide enough time to understand what's being voted on and vote on, voted up, voted down, get out of town. If we mess something up, we'll come back at the budget station and fix it. Uh, and that's always possible. Uh, this is a human institution that can happen. Uh, but there's no point in driving it out. And these rules are designed to prevent that. So, Mr. President, I urge us to support our leadership and to vote for these rules.
Further discussion, Vice President Hicks?
Mr. President, members of the body, and those people that are listening today here online to this discussion of adopting the rules, I'll be voting aye today. And I've listened to my colleagues, and I understand their concerns, and I share those concerns about adopting these rules and moving forward with processing bills. But the simple fact of the matter remains is, is if we don't adopt these, we're going to go back into a normal process. We are looking at a specific subject here. I'm cognizant of the fact that my conservative nature says that we should get down here and do our job and go home to our communities and our families and get back on with life. I think these rules provide us an opportunity to be able to do the people's work. And at the, the end of the day, I have no prejudgments when we will pass anything out of this body. I trust the process, Mr. President. I trust the people in here. We will make the best decisions that we are capable of making. And we will do the work of the people. These rules, while they are not perfect, afford us the opportunity to have a debate, some limited public participation. We've been debating this for months, folks. We have literally been debating this for months. I think we know what the issues are. Our job now is to come down here and make an attempt to do the best job that we're capable of doing. We should trust the process. If this is not the right process, then we will use our existing rules to do the work of the people. I do not impugn anybody's integrity for their beliefs. Because one of the fundamental things that I know about this body, and I cannot speak for my friends and the minority party, I know every single Republican in this body is opposed to the mandates that have come down from Washington, D.C. And I will stand by their decisions, whether it was to vote for a special session. And we need to listen to those people that did not vote for a special session. Because there is wisdom in those words. And if you don't understand their concerns, you cannot address them. And we should address those concerns of those people. But I will stand by their decision. I will stand by the decision that I make. I will vote my conscience, and we will do the work of the people in the Wyoming Senate. Whether you vote for the, these special session rules to try to expedite a process, is that a perfect process? Absolutely not. So we can debate whether we're going to do special rules, or we're going to do our normal ones. But, Mr. President, we are going to do the work of the people. And we are fallible. And what we produce may not be perfect, but do not sacrifice the perfect for the good. And I'm here to try to do good, Mr. President. And I know every one of my colleagues in here, every single one of my colleagues is here, is to do right by the people and the constituents they represent, and the constituents that I have that have asked me to come down here doing this are not that I have, that have asked me to come down here doing this are not the constituents that my colleagues have. And I respect that because they're people within the state of Wyoming. We are not a homogeneous mass. We have our communities, we have our individual thought processes, and our communities are not the same. The people I represent in Carbon and Sweetwater are not the same as the people in Laramie County and not the same people as Teton County. We should respect each individual's vote in this body. We should listen to them because you will gain wisdom from people that have a counter view to what you do. Mr. President, I'm going to vote yes on these special rules. I hold no malice in my heart for anybody that votes different because I know they are here for the same reason that I am, for the right reason, for the people of the state of Wyoming. And we will respect their decision. We will honor the process and we will respect the legacy that our forefathers in this chamber have left for us of decorum, civility and respect, regardless of what position you take on this issue. And I challenge the people of the state of Wyoming to do the same. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are on the special rules, joint rule one, Senator Case, and then we'll take it in order of Senator Landon, Senator Anderson, in that order. Go ahead, Senator Case.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues and everyone. It's good to see you again. It's good to see our friends from around the state here and everybody tuning in. This is a historic situation. There've only been 21 special sessions since statehood. And actually, most of the, the largest amount of those were extensions of the budget session when we ran out of time. The first, the very first session of the legislature was a special session. So that's one of the 21. There was a couple that were kind of important. They were around World War II when we extended the franchise to our voters, our military, people serving in the military so they could vote in Wyoming elections. We also, after World War II, when the university was flooded with GIs coming home and we beef, we had a special session to deal with the situation of a large number of GIs coming to the university. We also held special sessions to ratify constitutional amendments to the United States Constitution. We got rid of prohibition. I'm all for that one. We gave women the right to vote and we lowered the voting age to 18, all in special sessions. There was always a clear path forward in those kinds of special sessions. There was a feeling that we needed to put our shoulders together and go forward. We don't have that situation now. I agree with my good colleagues that point out that we all abhor the tyranny of the federal mandate. But, Mr. President, it doesn't work to abhor that tyranny and then to develop a special session that imposes its own tyranny on the people of Wyoming through the rules we adopt. I've heard several of you say, these people and our good friends, many from coal impacted communities in Wyoming that are watching their very future dissolve as Wyoming moves from being a coal producing state and gets the, the full impacts of the administration's concerns about global warming and our change in economy. We're trying to deal with that. These communities are struggling. We need to be a business friendly state, Mr. President. And I ask you about the, the optics of having a legislature that really willy nilly calls itself in to change the rules by which businesses operate. I challenge you to say that that is a good, stable platform for new business to come into Wyoming and help us lead past the carbon based economy that we've had in the past to our new future. And, Mr. President, I leave it to you with one more thing. Several of you have suggested that we need to have this session, the special rules, so that we listen to the people. What I suggest to you is we are not listening to the people because by short circuiting the rules, by having mirror bills that haven't been through committee, Mr. President, that haven't had interim work like the budget does before we get to the mirror bill in the budget session, these bills have not had that high level of scrutiny. And we will not only do mirror bills, which eliminates the deliberative process and the importance of time in our process to cool the passions of one house versus the other. All gone. And a series of mirror bills with multiple readings on the same day, Mr. President. When we speed it up like that, we're not listening to the people of Wyoming because they won't even be able to yield their voices to us because they will not have the opportunity to participate. They'll go to work tomorrow and by tomorrow afternoon, it'll be all over when they get home and can read the newspaper, which is carrying news from a day before. They cannot follow this unless you're here and present, or you have the luxury of being able to take off work and be online. Important issues? Let's take our time, vote no on the rules. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues.
Senator Landon, please. Let me, let me just interrupt here. If we have any disruption from the gallery or any form or fashion, we'll just shut it down. I remind you, please have respect. There'll be no more outbursts like that from the gallery. Senator Landon.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for those words just now. I'll do my best, fellow senators, to try to match the eloquence of the previous three. I really look up to all three of them and, and I thank, I thank the Vice President for his words this morning. I think many of you who know me well enough know that my heart is, is, is pretty big for this Wyoming Senate. Outside of my beautiful wife putting up with me and my amazing kids and an extended family that, that's amazing, that allows me to do this, this is one of the greatest honors of my life to be able to join you in here. That said, I'm, I'm very disappointed, Mr. President, that we're at a point in time when things aren't quite like they have always been here in the Wyoming Senate. You and I have come a long ways together from out there in the middle of the room and, and we've come down the river a long ways. And I think it's a shame that, that we've got targets on, on folks for standing up for, for pretty common sense beliefs. So I agree with the Vice President. I think it is important that, that we maintain some decorum in here and we listen to each other. I just want to say real quickly why I'm going to vote against the rules. I said a month ago that I did not believe that we needed this special session. I try to be a fiscal conservative. That just represents the party I've always belonged to. And I don't believe that this is a good expenditure of taxpayer dollars to call ourselves down here for something that, in my opinion, does not elevate to the levels that you just heard about. It just simply doesn't. We're not going to be able to do anything this week legislatively, Mr. President, that we can't do the first of February. We can chip around the edges of this thing, but we truthfully can't do a whole lot legislatively to fix this problem. That's unfortunate, but it's the reality. Mr. President, we chose as a group to elevate this issue to something akin to an eruption in Yellowstone Park that takes out the western part of our state or to something like us being out of money as a state of Wyoming. And I respect that. I respect the votes that we all cast and so we're here. Now that we've elevated that to that kind of level, Mr. President, to an eruption in Yellowstone Park or out of money or some such like that, then I just simply believe that we deserve, we need to give this the time that it deserves because we've made it a special session topic. There are 20 different bills that I'm aware of that are sitting in the hopper. I've read most of them. And my constituents need to know what those bills say because some of them are going to disrupt the way Wyoming does business. And for that reason, I don't have any problem. Let's strap in and let's do, let's do the normal process and let's look at the bills. If it's important enough to be here, Mr. President, then let's operate under the regular rules. Thank you.
Senator Anderson.
Mr. President, I agree with the previous speakers. I do not approve of federal mandates, but I don't approve of state mandates either. If, if this subject does rise to the level of seriousness to call a special session, then maybe we should spend some time doing it instead of cutting it short. I understand that if we don't vote for the rules, then we'll go to the regular, regular rules and we might go five or six days. But if there are 20 bills before us, that gives the public time to look at them and us time to look at them and evaluate them also. So I'm, I'm not for special rules. I'm for keeping our regular rules. Thank you.
Further discussion on the rule? Further discussion, Senator Kinsky.
Mr. President, thank you. I, I intend to vote for the specials, special session rules. I would like to address something that I hope through the course of the debate has become abundantly clear to those listening. Somehow, there was this idea that if the special rules failed, the whole, the whole session failed. And that took on a life of its own. And I received a lot of demands by email that we, we pass those special rules. And so I, I want to be clear that we will still have a session if the special rules go down. I'm okay if we take more time. I think the three days under the special session rules is, is fine. It's narrow enough, at least in my mind. What we're trying to address are employers who are not under threat from the federal government mandating that their employees receive the vaccine or be fired without any other option. And I think we can sort through these bills clearly enough to identify the kinds of things we don't want to do. And I've identified those in an op ed piece in, in my hometown papers. I'm not going to vote for a bill that's poorly written. We can sort that out in three days. I'm not going to vote for a bill that punishes the innocent. Okay? This mandate is coming down from people who know how to pull all the levers of power. And when the final rule comes out on healthcare providers, likely it will say certify that you have a 100% vaccination mandate in your hospital or we cut off all your Medicaid and Medicare payments. That's better than two thirds of most, of the revenue of most hospitals. That would bankrupt our hospitals. We're not going to pass a bill that says, by the way, hospital, if you, if you obey that federal mandate, we're going to fine you instead. We're just not going to place our healthcare system in that position. At the same time, I'm not going to vote for anything that destroys jobs. So 10 years as mayor in my hometown, we worked like the dickens to diversify our economy and we have. We are in the manufacturing business in my part of the state. Hundreds of manufacturing jobs. We replaced the jobs that were lost when the mill closed. We replaced the jobs that were lost when one of the mines closed. Now, some of these firms do some very advanced work, including for the Department of Defense. And they have received their mandate. They have no choice. If you want this next federal contract, you will have 100% vaccination. You do not have a testing option. I'm not going to bankrupt those firms because they depend very heavily on these defense contracts. So it's going to be easy for us, I think, in the three days under the special rules to sort out the things that is clearly we don't want to do and the things that clearly we do want to undertake, like prohibiting employers who are not under any such mandate from mandating 100% vaccination without giving their employees even so much as an option to test out. So on and for the rules, and I would urge the body to adopt them by two thirds vote. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion on the rules? Further discussion? Further comment? Mr. Minot, floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on and against the rules, and I want to be very clear. The debate over the rules is not a debate over the topic. It's not a debate over the bills that are before us. It's a debate about the rules, about what the rules of order for this special session should be. We're here. We were called here. That went through the appropriate rules process of the 66th legislature pursuant to the Wyoming Constitution. I voted against, but I'm here because I was called here by my colleagues, all of you. To be honest, I don't want to be here three days. I don't want to be here longer than three days. But, Mr. President, if we're going to commit our time, our interests, our expertise, our staff, our resources, our finances to addressing these challenges because we were called here, then, Mr. President, we should do it the right way. We have the rules of the 66th Wyoming Legislature that we adopted as a body unanimously. We adopted those rules because Wyoming has a long, historic tradition of doing things the right way. This chamber is a deliberative chamber. This chamber is collegial. This chamber works together and moves forward legislation appropriate and valued by the people of Wyoming and by our constituents. The process matters. It's not an accident that we've done a good job with our legislation over the years that I've been in the legislature, serving with many of you. It's because of the process, because of the rules we adopt, because we allow each chamber to take a separate look at the legislation, embracing a bicameral legislature, recognizing that one chamber isn't necessarily going to get it right the first time, making sure that all of us have the opportunity to scrutinize each bill with appropriate time for that deliberation, each amendment with sufficient time, spread out over multiple days. And that's after it goes through a committee process where it's patiently scrutinized with the engagement of the public, something that's pretty unique about Wyoming. The possibility for everyone in this room to weigh in on their thoughts on the legislation. We won't have that time if we pass these rules. We will have a committee process, but you can rest assured it's going to be as expedited as everything else because we've got to get out in three days. We're going to do three, three full readings in three days. To accomplish that, we're basically going to abandon the concepts that underlie our committee of the whole. What are those? Unlimited debate, an opportunity to explore, an opportunity to amend. Proposed rules get rid of those things. It's just an explanation. And the possibility of an amendment from the standing committee. You have limited debate. It's certainly not unlimited. And you have a limited amount of time you're allowed to speak. There's a reason we don't do that in the 66th legislative's rules. We don't do that because that's where we get the work done. That's where we begin to understand. We ask questions. We explore. We hone, we refine, we work together to build a better piece of legislation. If this is important enough for us to assemble here, it's important enough for us to do right. It's not about whether you support the bills or not. It's about whether you support this institution and this process. This institution's been around a lot longer than any of us. It's going to be here a lot longer than any of us are. We're simply folks holding a seat for a short period of time in a long continuity of the history of the Wyoming Legislature. We understand that we need special sessions from time to time and we understand that we need special rules for those sessions. We had one a while back to address early COVID requirements. But with that, I certainly recall an extensive amount of committee meetings beforehand. Oh my gosh, did I spend an awful lot of time in that minerals committee, working through that legislation, talking with all of you about it. That was how we helped to remedy some of the concerns, but we still had robust debate. And honestly, it still probably wasn't good enough. A lot of us were concerned about that. I was. I didn't like everything that happened, but there was an emergent need. The emergent need's not here right now. There's a desire to have a special session, but it doesn't need to be done in three days. If it's done in seven, it's just going to be a better product. I'm probably still going to vote against that product. I might not. We'll see. But it's not about the bills. It's not. against that product. I might not. We'll see. But it's not about the bills. It's not about the bills. It's about the process. Do we do it right, or do we take shortcuts?
Time.
I think we should do it right, Mr. President.
Further discussion? Senator McCune.
More of a comment, Mr. President. I'm listening to people talk about effects on the economy, and effects here and effects there. But what I haven't heard is how this violates our state constitution, our U.S. Constitution. And I mean, look up above us. This is why we're here and they're here. And to say this session doesn't be good enough to elevate to be a session, we're, we're telling all them, ah, whatever. So at the end of the day, however we decide to proceed, I would suggest that we need to proceed and fix some of this instead of saying we don't need to do it. November 1st is coming. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion on the rules? Further discussion? At this point, we will transition into the amendments. Chief Clerk will read in the proposed amendments, starting with J.R. 11.
J.R. 0011, Amendment to the Special Session Rules to Amend Requirement That Mirror Bills Be Submitted in Advance.
Senator Driscoll.
Mr. President, I would like to withdraw J.R. 0011 S.
Thank you. Absent objection. J.R. 11 S will be withdrawn. Chief Clerk, J.R. 4.
J.R. 0004, Amendment to the Special Session Rules to Remove Remote Participation.
Senator Rafferty.
Mr. President, it's time without objection. I would withdraw Joint Rule 4 S.
Absent objection, joint rule 4 S has been withdrawn. Chief Clerk.
Joint Rule 0003, Amendment to the Special Session Rules to Allow Remote Participation from Legislators Quarantined Because of COVID-19.
Senator Rafferty.
Mr. President, without objection, I would withdraw Joint Rule 3 S.
Absent objection. Joint Rule 3 S has been withdrawn. Chief Clerk.
Joint Rule 0006, Amendment to Special Session Rules to Allow Unlimited Debate During Committee of the Whole.
Senator Rafferty.
Mr. President, without objection, I would withdraw Joint Rule 6 S.
Absent objection. Joint Rule 6 S has been withdrawn. Chief Clerk.
Joint Rule 0008, Amendment to Special Session Rules to Require a Two-Thirds Vote of Elected Members to Place Bills on the List of Mirror Bills.
Senator Rafferty.
Mr. President, without objection, I would withdraw Joint Rule 8 S.
Absent objection. Joint Rule 8 S has been withdrawn. Chief Clerk.
Joint Rule 0002, Amendment to the Special Session Rules to Specify Members Attending a Special Session or Standing Committee Meeting Remotely Shall Be Considered Present Only When the Member's Video Is Visible.
Senator Cost.
With no objections, I would ask to withdraw.
Senator, would you name the poll?
I'm sorry. Amendment J.R. 0002 H.
Thank you, Senator. 2 S. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Point of order. The good senator has the House copy, and I believe he's withdrawing Joint Rule 2. Excuse me, is it 2? Joint Rule 2 S rather than 2 H.
Senator Cost.
Thank you. I'll get this correct one of these days. J.R. 0002 S, I wish to withdraw.
Absent objection. Joint Rule 0002 S has been withdrawn. We don't do that now. Taking us back in to Joint Rule 1 now. Senator Kinskey.
Just a quick point of order, Mr. President. I believe staff is putting together a standalone amendment to our existing rules with respect to remote participation for subsequent consideration by the body.
Just a minute. Stand at ease till the sound of the gavel for that additional amendment. Thank you. Appreciate the discussion. We are now ready. Have everybody in their seats. We're now ready to vote on Joint Rule 1, the new rules. Chief Clerk, call the roll. This motion requires a two-thirds vote of the membership, and it has been moved. Chief Clerk.
Anderson? No. Baldwin? No. Whitman? Aye. Boner? Aye. Bouchard? Aye. Case? No. Cooper? Aye. Driscoll? Aye. Ellis? No. French? Aye. Burfey? No. Group? No. Hicks? Aye. Hutchings? James? Aye. Kinskey? Aye. Cole? Aye. Cost? Aye. Landon? No. McCune? Aye. Nethercot? No. Pappas excused. Perkins? No. Rafferty? No. Salazar? Aye. Schuler? Aye. Scott? Aye. Steinmetz? Aye. Wasserburger? No. Hutchings? Aye. Doc Sutter? Aye. Closing vote. Closing vote closed. 18 aye, 11 no, 1 excused.
By your vote, Amendment Joint Resolution 1 to Joint Rules, adding 24 has not been adopted by the Senate. We have two more Senate rules to proceed with. Chief Clerk, Senate Rule 1.
Senate Rule 1. Senate Rule 18 is created to read 18 dot O, Rules for the Special Session.
Senator Driscoll.
Mr. President, thank you. I move for adoption, Senate Rule 1. Folks, what this does is, should we go ahead with a, a regular session, this rule's pretty simple, and it takes two-thirds to pass it, and I ask for your, your favorable vote on it. If we're going to try to expedite a session, our normal process is a bill comes through a committee, it comes back, it has an appropriation, and is re-referred to appropriations for a second time in the committee, and that takes time necessarily. We'll have to take a break between that so the appropriations can meet and do it. This allows appropriations to meet concurrently, and it's a may, not a shall. The president doesn't have to do this, but he is allowed to assign that bill because they already know it has appropriations in it, to assign it to appropriations committee the same time that he assigns it to another committee. And they'll have to pay attention because if the committee changes appropriations in it, it may require more work with appropriations. But should they agree, it expedites our process and probably saves us quite a bit of time by the end of the session. So that's really all this does. It's a pretty simple thing, and it, it allows us, maybe might save us as much as a day in the end of this thing if we can do it. I don't think there's anything nefarious about it. It's just to expedite, to expedite our process. With that, I'd stand for questions. Thank you.
Further discussion on Senate Rule 1? Minority Leader Rafferty.
Thank you, Mr. President. On and for. This seems like a reasonable approach. We'll see how it works.
Further discussion? Further discussion? Further discussion? Further discussion. Chief, question being called. Chief Clerk, call the roll.
Anderson? Aye. Baldwin? Aye. Whitman? I. Boner? I. Bouchard? I. Case? No. Cooper? I. Driscoll? I. Ellis? No. French? I. Burfee? I. Giroux? I. Hicks? I. Hutchings? I. James? I. Kinskey? I. Cole? I. Cost? I. Landon? I. McCune? I. Nethercutt? I. Pappas, excuse. Perkins? No. Rothfuss? I. Salazar? I. Schuler? I. Scott? I. Steinmetz? I. Wasserberger? No. President Doc Sutter? I. Closing vote. Closing vote closed. Twenty-five I, four no, one excused.
By your vote, Senate Rule One has passed the Senate. Senate Rule Two, Chief Clerk, read in the Senate, or excuse me, the Senate Rule Two.
Senate Rule Two. Senate Rule Three dash six is created to read.
Senator Boner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for adoption of Senate Rule Three dash six, and ask for the body's favorable consideration. Mr. President, certainly we're all here to address a very important challenge we're facing in this state. I think we're all committed to staying here as long as it takes to do it right, but also ask for your consideration on this amendment to acknowledge some of the discussion we've already had about this being a citizen legislature, and that we do have commitments back home. We do have families that we have to take care of, and we often think for each other in terms of our occupations. That's our identity, and we have attorneys, we have ranchers, we have folks small walks of life, we have small business owners. But I think that it's also important to have diversity of perspective from people who are at different points in their life, and allow them to continue to participate in this process, and send a message that we are open to that. As somebody who has a young family, I think that's important, as they see this legislature becoming increasingly less of a citizen legislature and more of a professional legislature. I just think it's important that we give this, have some opportunity for remote participation for those of us who do have obligations back home, and just like to point out that this is not a guarantee. It's a may with the approval of the presiding officer, you, Mr. President, and also point out that now that we do have more time to consider these bills, and we'll have presumably about ten per day, that does give us some more time to really be considerate and get input from our constituents, and I think that goes a little bit easier, at least for me, when I'm living among them and then going to the grocery store and seeing them better than I'm down here in Cheyenne. So for all those reasons, as an option, I'd ask that this body approve this new rule for the Senate, and we're limited to special sessions, and just ask for your favorable consideration.
Further discussion on Senate Rule Two. Senator Landon.
Mr. President, thank you, and I'm going to speak in favor of this rule, and quite frankly, Mr. President, on the drive down here, I didn't think that I would speak in favor of this kind of amendment. Back to the previous discussion about the importance of this session and the fact that we've elevated it to special session, I feel pretty strongly that we need to try to be here for that. That's what we signed up for. But I've got a really good friend who needs to be on his ranch this time of year. Nobody planned for this, what's going on this week. Got a good friend that needs to be at the ranch. I've got another really good friend in here who has to be home for his wife's surgery. There are things this time of year that none of us plan to be in here for, so on and in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Further discussion, Senate Rule Two. Minority floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on and against Senate Rule Two? We've all experienced this in the past. This is normal. We have obligations elsewhere during session. We miss a small amount of session. We're traveling. We clear that with presiding officers. We're excused. We come back as soon as we can. This is the place we need to be. If this is important enough, now we're back to the topic itself. If this topic is important enough to call us here for a special session, be here. I don't want to be here either. We talked about this before. But I'm going to be here. I'm going to cancel the work that I've got. And I'm going to be here because this is the Senate. We are in the Senate. This is an easy one for us to erode moving forward. If we make it easy so that we're all just twenty-nine people on the screen and a presiding officer in a chair, because that's easier, and it is. It's easier. This institution's going to be dramatically different, and I do understand. I do understand that everyone wants to go home now and tune in from time to time and cast your vote and go back to your daily life. I didn't vote for this special session, but I'm here. If you voted for the special session, or if you didn't vote for the special session, you were sworn into this office, and you were sworn in in this chamber. This is where we do the business of the people. I certainly won't hold it against anybody if you leave for a while, if you have to go back home and do some work. We need a forum here. I'll do my best to be a part of that forum. Sixteen members in this chamber can conduct business, and we will. And we'll try and work it out, and we'll talk to our colleagues, and we'll make sure we've got enough people, and we'll make sure that we can get people home. We'll make sure that we can have people supporting their families. But, Mr. President, we need to do that from this chamber. Technology can make this easier, but this is not better. We all have experienced virtual special sessions, and I'd invite everyone to think back to how effective we were when we were virtual relative to how effective we are when we're here, how much better of a job we do when we're in this room. It's not an accident that the Constitution requires us to be sworn in in this room. It doesn't let us mail that in. It's a priority of the Constitution. It's a priority of the people. If we've been called into special session, which we have, and we're not planning on adjourning, let's stick around, Mr. President.
Further discussion on Senate Rule Two. Vice President.
Mr. President, on and for the rule, and normally, I would agree under normal circumstances that we should be behind the bar, that we should be in the chamber. This has happened relatively fast. We do have people that have lives, but if we go down this route and we deny somebody that we have unforeseen circumstances, and I will not pass any judgment on my colleagues, whether they're here or participating remotely, but by effectively, by not adopting this rule with the available technology we have and an understanding that there is going to be a vast super majority of senators present on the floor, why would we deny those senators the opportunity to represent the people that they were elected to represent via electronically, because they have some circumstance that is beyond their control, that they have to be there? So if you effectively don't adopt this rule, what you're saying to those people, those eighteen to twenty thousand people that each one of us in this body represents, that we are not going to allow your elected representative to represent you in a vote in the Wyoming Senate? And that's what a no vote does, Mr. President. That's the effect of taking away somebody's ability to represent the people that elected them to this office, and I would encourage you, strongly encourage you, to vote yes.
Further discussion? Further discussion on Senate Rule Two. Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, we have important work ahead of us. Unlike a lot of my colleagues, I work at a desk. I'm not out on the ranch tending to cattle or sheep or anything like that. And I can tell you what happens when I have Zoom meetings from my office. My attention is divided. I've got my work. I've got my legislative duties, and as hard as I try and just focus on one, the two worlds collide. I just think we're here to do important work for a very limited time. Our thinking will be better. Our work product will be better, and I'm a little nervous about the precedence that sets for the citizen legislature. If we make it too easy for us to call ourselves into a session, then we could be doing this monthly, and we could all just zoom in. And I don't know that we're going to gain a whole lot by going down this path, so I think we're starting down that slippery slope of becoming more of a professional legislature that meets year-round. So for that, I would echo the comments. I mean, this meeting this week was a disruption in my work schedule and my personal life schedule, but I'm here, and we're here to do work, and we should do the work of the people, and that means interacting with one another to talk about ideas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Majority floor leader.
President, thank you. I wasn't going to speak on it, but I feel compelled to. I think it's absolutely critical we allow it. I'm one of the ones that's sitting there. This is probably the busiest time of the year for my ranch operation, and we laid off lots of what we're doing this week. But my schedule next week is more of the same, which I can do a good part of this. I'll probably end up being here. But for our end, we also have redistricting, folks. I have meetings almost every day next week on redistricting in the evenings so that we can interact with all of our folks. That's going to mean we're going to cancel a full week of meetings to try to finish our redistricting, which I'll be able to do if I can do part of it remotely. And if we push redistricting back, we start getting into some real problems, and that's going to be true also with other committee meetings. If we've got guys that are down here for another, for all of us, through the whole thing, it may mean that they don't make committee meetings they've got coming up, because we've backed up committee meetings. We're going to back them up further now. I think it's very clear that this is only for a special session. This isn't a slippery slope. This is concession for a special session. And I think in this instance, I can tell you for a couple of the ones I know that it means whether they're here, and I have a chance to hear them remotely and hear their testimony and hear what they want to do, or have them be gone and have them silent, I'll err to the side of hearing what they have to say. I encourage us to pass this.
Further discussion. We are on Senate Rule Two. Senator Boner? Senator Rothfuss, then we'll go back to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to make sure he was speaking after me. Mr. President, this does not exclude participation. It excludes voting, just to be clear. Anybody who's elsewhere in the state can come in by Zoom, can watch, can testify in committee, can collaborate. You can do just about anything at this point in time without any violation of the rules, except you have to be here to vote. That's the special thing in this chamber if you're voting. And that's the key, and that's the key concept that prevents this from just being thirty people around the state on screens eventually, carrying out what they believe to be the will of the people, but not getting together and talking, and this is pretty precedent-setting. This is a big deal, I think, this vote. I, again, would love to be able to not have to be here for the next ten days, having not voted for this special session, but it gets back to the institution and how we do things. And some absent votes and not being able to cast the votes is not going to be the end of the world, but it preserves the institution. I would expect all of my colleagues that do have to go do work to go do the work and to participate to the greatest ability remotely, watching on screen. We're streaming live right now. Weigh in, track the bills, work amendments. The only difference is, the only privilege that occurs only in this chamber right now is that vote, casting the vote. And if we've got an important vote, and they'll probably align, most of them will occur in the same days, we need to be down here in Cheyenne. We need to be in this chamber. We need to be saying out loud, aye or no, at that moment, against the amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Let's close it out with the sponsor. Senator Boner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for a good discussion, ladies and gentlemen. Just point out, based off some previous discussion, first of all, as far as slippery slope towards a full-time legislature, ladies and gentlemen, I mean, here we are. Here we are. So the idea that this is something that comes later is not true, as far as I'm concerned. We, as my good colleague from Metro County pointed out, it's not whether you're here actually sitting in this chamber the whole time, it's whether you actually have an opportunity to go out and make a living outside the legislature and actually, you know, live under the rules that you make and the laws that you make here. I think we've lost that with this special session. I say it's not important. I voted for the session. Don't get me wrong. But we need to be cognizant of that. So the idea that we're, you know, this is going to be a slippery slope. We're at the bottom of the hill, Mr. President. So I'd like to point out once again, since we need a reminder of what's in the rule, there's nothing saying that there's going to be twenty-nine people up on that screen. That's just not true. This is only with the approval of the presiding officer. I trust the good president to manage that properly. I've talked to many of you. You've already made arrangements. You're going to stay here. I respect that. So just make sure we're focusing on the facts of what this amendment does and what it doesn't do, but also being cognizant of this is always a turning point for this institution. Are we going to allow it to be a citizen legislature for everybody? Or just for people who are retired and have the opportunity to do this full-time? On and for the amendment.
Question on the amendment? Question being called. Chief Clerk, call the roll. Reminder, this one requires two-thirds vote.
Anderson? Aye. Baldwin? I. Whitman? No. Boner? I. Bouchard? No. Case? No. Cooper? No. Driscoll? I. Ellis? No. French? I. Burfee? I. Giroux? I. Hicks? I. Hutchings? No. James? No. Kinskey? I. Cole? I. Cost? I. Landon? I. McCune? No. Nethercutt? Nethercutt? I. Pappas, excuse. Perkins? I. Rothfuss? No. Salazar? No. Schuler? I. Scott? No. Steinmetz? I. Wasserberger? No. President Doc Sutter? I. Closing vote. Closing vote closed. Seventeen I, twelve no, one excused.
Your vote sent a rule two has failed the Senate. So at this point, Mr. Majority floor leader, call us from the desk. We will recess. Senate will recess until twelve forty-five, so we can get some work done. Twelve forty-five. We'll resume sound of the gavel. We're in recess until twelve forty-five. No, he didn't do it.